Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. Welcome to our public work session. Also, I want to welcome all of our visitors and invited guests who are here today. Want to welcome our city staff and all those in the audience. Thank you for being here today. I also want to recognize my colleagues on City Council. Thank you all for being here. And recognize our city manager, Mr. Carter, our city attorney, Sylvande Graham Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. White. Thank you all for being here. And with that, we will ask that all of my colleagues note your attendance electronically.
Seven members of City Council present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Carter, sure you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council, my colleagues on the dais, all the ones in the audience. Have a couple of presentations for you this evening. The first one, we think, is going to take a little bit of time to digest and discuss, which is the Water and Sewer Infrastructure Maintenance Plan. Then we have the, a short overview of our public facilities. That one is going to require some more information that we'll bring to you at a later date. I'm going to also ask if, this may be out of order there, but I'm going to ask the mayor if he will indulge me with a couple of things here. Have a couple of employees who are retiring. And if you don't mind, I'd like for you to present them with a, or a plaque, if you don't mind.
I certainly don't mind, sir. Are they present with us today?
I hope so. Mr. Jake Sumler, is he available?
I'm looking for him.
Okay. And Alex Oliver.
I'm looking for him.
All right. Would you bring Oliver forward?
Did you have some comments you wanted to read?
I absolutely will.
Mr. Oliver, if you would come forward, sir.
Mr. Oliver is retiring after 45 years with the city. He's born and raised in Portsmouth, graduated from Churchland High School. He's an outdoorsman in Campera and plans to spend some more time with his family. Want to congratulate Mr. Oliver for his time served for the city. Forty-five years is no small feat, and we thank you for your presence. He's with General Services. Yes, sir. His nickname, I think, is Ray. Oh, yes. Do, where is, oh, there he is. Mr. Wright, are you ready? Mr. Wright is going to take the lead. He's with our engineering department. However, this presentation is mostly about public utilities. All right. He served as the interim, serves as the interim director for public utilities. Mr. Russell Stevens, who is also in the audience, he's the deputy director and the one who's running the day-to-day operations of the department now. This is kind of similar to what we talked about with the roads and bridges piece, to kind of give you an idea of what our history was, where we are today, and kind of where we need to go with that. So this is just, again, some informational things. It's a little bit detailed because of the issue that we're trying to cover. We'll try to keep this at a level that everybody can come along, but I think it's important that we understand where we are with this particular portion of our city. Mr. Wright?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Here to give you an overview of the public utilities department. So I'm not sure that most of you know that our water comes from the city of Suffolk. We have reservoirs and a treatment plant out there. So the Portsmouth Water Company was established by the General Assembly in 1879 to convey water from the Dismal Swamp and Lake Drummond to the city of Portsmouth, the Gothport Navy Yard, the Norfolk Naval Hospital, and other ports in Norfolk County. The company was sold under foreclosure in 1897 and renamed the Portsmouth and Suffolk Water Company. In 1902, the three companies were consolidated by another act of the General Assembly, and in 1902, it became the Portsmouth, Berkeley, and Suffolk Water Company. The city of Portsmouth entered into a contract in 1980, nineteen, I'm sorry. Well, entered into a contract and exercised an option to purchase the water system, and it's been part of our water system since 1919. And so as you see there, that is the watershed, the property that we own in the city of Suffolk. So a water view, overview of the water system. So water comes from the source, goes through a treatment plant, is delivered via transmission main to the distribution system, and from the distribution system, it gets into the residences. So this basically shows a general diagram of a water system at its basic level, and then shows to the, to the right there, the components in our water system. Treatment plant, the lakes, the dams, the piping, elevated water towers and such. Once again, a schematic here of a sanitary sewer system. The sewage just goes from your house to a sewer main, goes to a sanitary sewer pump station, and then is pumped to a wastewater treatment plant. We do not currently have a wastewater treatment plant. Our sewage is treated by HRSD. And this, to the right, gives you an idea of the infrastructure that's in our sanitary sewer system. This map here shows the age of our sanitary sewer system and our water system, general age. And so more than two-thirds of the pipes in our distribution system are fully depreciated and considered to be beyond their useful life. The oldest section of our transmission mains, which runs from Suffolk delivering water into town, had a date back to the 1890s. The oldest sewer pump station was placed in service in 1925. Approximately 40% of the water sewer lines in downtown Portsmouth were installed prior to 1920. And some of the challenges here with both utilities. Water and sewer service are some of the most heavily regulated infrastructure we have in the city. They're by the Environmental Protection Agency, DEQ, Department of Health, Department of Environmental Quality, and Department of Conservation and Recreation. Portsmouth and all other Hampton Roads localities and HRSD are currently under consent order with EPA and DEQ to lower sanitary sewer overflows. We have new dam safety regulations by DCR, and EPA and VDH are currently working with the city and all other localities in the state of Virginia with the lead and copper rule regulations. And then aging pipe and infrastructure require more maintenance, and it's more susceptible to breaks and failures. So I'm going to take it piece by piece. So this is a picture of Lake Mead water supply. So 74% of our water comes from two reservoirs, Lake Mead and Lake Cahoon. So our water system is supplied by four drinking water reservoirs in the city of Suffolk: Lake Mead, Lake Cahoon, Lake Kilby, and Spates Run. Lake Mead and Lake Cahoon account for 74% of our water supply. There are more than 36,000 residential and commercial accounts that include portions of the city of Suffolk, the city of Chesapeake, and then some of the primary customers in town: Norfolk Naval Shipyard, Portsmouth Naval Medical Center, the two port facilities, PMT and Virginia International Gateway, Crane Island Fuel Terminal, Coast Guard Base, and the Fifth District Command. So the reservoirs. So, sorry. So we maintain five dams as part of our drinking water supply and water treatment process. Four of the dams for drinking water are considered high-hazard dams. The dam for the Sludge Lagoon is considered a low-hazard dam. So DCR classifies dams with a high-hazard potential as based on downstream losses and anticipated, anticipated property loss, economic damage. So for high-hazard potential dams, such as the ones that we have, they're required to have an inspection every other year by a licensed professional engineer. That year that they're not inspected by a licensed professional engineer, they can have just a normal routine inspection by regular staff. Regulations do not require an inspection except for every six years for dams that are low-hazard. So based on our overall condition assessment, all five dams are considered to have a poor rating. Now, why they're considered to have a poor rating is that they're basically for loading conditions that may realistically occur. So just recently mentioned, we have new dam regulations, which change the criteria under which the dams were previously evaluated. More stringent regulations and rule changes shift them into a different category. And additionally, they have some vegetation. Any trees within 25 feet of the dam need to be removed, and then burrowing animals, those holes need to be filled, and you need to come up with a pest management plan to take care of those invasive species that impact the dams. So those regulations that I just previously mentioned, new DCR dam regulations impact the magnitude of the spillway design flood that is required to safely pass the dam. This requires significant engineering design and dam rehabilitation. The overall cost for activities associated with this dam rehabilitation exceeds $100 million. The regulatory requirement for preliminary engineering reports is 2025, so the end of this, the end of this calendar year.
Excuse me, Mr. Wright.
Yes, sir.
We do have a question from, from one of our colleagues, Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, thank you. It's not, oh, sorry.
But one thing I would say, I notice a lot in this packet to get through. If we could just hold our questions, kind of write it down on your paper, and we can go back to it.
Yes, sir, Mayor. And this isn't a question. I just couldn't hear some of the, the presentation. If you did mind speaking into the mic just a bit more. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
How about now?
That's better. Thank you.
All right. Apologies, right. So, so some of the funding you see in the chart there. So recently, we just, we went to council. We've got some dam safety and floodplain management grants to help with preliminary engineering reports. Those are half the cost for, for those reports. There's a new grant cycle coming up, which would allow us to get another half of the half that we, that's the city share that we're applying for, for the rehab of Lake Mead. We have a BRIC grant that is pending. It's an FY 2022 application. We're still going back and forth with the federal entities answering those questions so that funding can become available. And just recently, we, our pre-application was approved by the Corps that sets us up to do a full application for a potential $101 million federal assistance loan for the dam rehab projects. So water treatment, and this is Lake Kilby Water Treatment Plant. So this is inside look of the treatment plant. So in 2019, we did a hurricane assessment for some buildings and infrastructure out at Lake Kilby. Evaluated operations building, the West Chemical Storage Building, laboratory building, and the maintenance building. The buildings were found to be in overall good condition, and noted that significant structural damage from a category-two hurricane is not anticipated. Also, that same year, did a space needs programming to look at future needs assessment for upgrades for the existing work environment, looking at modernization with considerations for growth, flexibility, and expandability. Then evaluation of the entire footprint and the four main buildings. And the cost to implement the recommendations for that space needs ranged between $3 million and $6 million. And so looking at some of the recent projects that have been completed out at the treatment plant, the filter upgrade project was completed in 2023, cost just over $43 million. That was driven by requirements, regulatory requirements from DEQ and Virginia Department of Health due to the age and condition of the prior infrastructure. So we have a new administration building and filter complex, new electrical building, conversion of former filter buildings to a UV disinfection building, and a blower building, new mixing system for residual tank, and a new staff parking lot. There's also additional space for expansion to meet future regulatory requirements. There's SCADA upgrades project, when SCADA stands for Supervisory Controlled Data Acquisition System. That was completed along with the filter upgrade project, and that goes back to, if you look at the screen there, that's what you see on the screen, some, some of that technology there, controls, graphics, virtual server, software workstation, and hardware to manage treatment operations. Also included were a couple of reupillations for the drinking water wells that we use as far as production. The first one was DW-02, both, once again, being regulatory requirements, drinking water well repairs, pump motor replacement, and a chloride monitoring well, so we could comply with our groundwater withdrawal permit. And then we're currently working on the design for the DW-1 conversion. That's our oldest drinking water well. It's required by a new groundwater permit, does not meet current standards. So we'll be abandoning that existing well in place and then doing a replacement with the conditions that are set out in our withdrawal permit. So we'll move on to transmission mains. This is a picture of a clamp on a transmission main back in 2010. And so transmission mains transport finished water via large water diameter pipelines from Lake Kilby Water Treatment Plant to the water distribution system. Water is transported from the treatment plant via the low-pressure transmission main system and the high-pressure transmission main system, deliver water to Suffolk and to lower Portsmouth. The high-pressure transmission mains deliver water to Chesapeake and to Churchland. Low-pressure system may, may operate at 45 PSI. The high-pressure system may operate up to 75 PSI, but because of the condition of the pipelines, they operate at, at pressure levels much lower. So this is a picture of transmission mains crossing, I think, Shingle Creek. The three lines, the three lower lines you see are our transmission main. The, the line at the top of the screen, I think, is a Suffolk gravity main owned by the city of Suffolk. So the low, the low-pressure transmission main system transports treated water from Suffolk into Portsmouth, approximately 18 miles. Is comprised of three individual water mains that are interconnected by valve trees at 12 locations. There are two 20, 20-inch cast pipes that were placed in service in 1888 and 1906. One 30-inch concrete pipe that was placed in service in 1938 that uses interconnections from a previous 1919 pipe. Eight percent of this pipeline is in city of Portsmouth right-of-way. Seven percent is in Suffolk right-of-way. Five percent is within active Norfolk Southern right-of-way, which is formerly Norfolk and Western Railroad, and this is in Suffolk. Eighty percent of these lines lie in active CSX Railroad, formerly Seaboard Coastline Railroad, between both, between Suffolk and Portsmouth. So this is a picture of one of the high-pressure mains, also crossing Shingle Creek. The high-pressure transmission main system transports finished water from the treatment plant to the Churchland area, approximately 15 miles, and consists of a single 36-inch reinforced concrete pipe circa 1964, leaves the plant, and heads through Suffolk. At intersection of Constance Road and Willmore Road, the 36-inch main reduces to a 30-inch cast main circa 1964, and a parallel 42-inch ductile iron main constructed in 1992. Both mains transport water along railway, railroad right-of-way to the intersection of Nazman Parkway and Commonwealth Railroad, where they reduce to a single 24-inch cast main from 1968, and continues along the railroad property into Churchland. So back in 2014, and then some additional work in 2017, we looked at the transmission main lines and did, and did some studies to evaluate risk and other issues with that infrastructure. The goals of the study were to model the system, to determine the strengths and weaknesses, verify capacity of the transmission system, investigate the condition of the transmission system, improve the reliability and redundancy between the two types, the two systems, determine the impact of improvements to that system on the treatment plant, and provide a necessary augmentation to the treatment plant, provide an implementation schedule and cost for each proposed scenario, provide recommendations for improvements to the existing transmission main system and distribution system. And as part of that, we looked at risk reduction, so likelihood of failure. What is the probability that an event would occur? Consequence of failure. What is the result of an event occurring? Evaluated all possible solutions and optimized result comparing risk reduction and costs. The results were a comprehensive plan for upgrades to ensure system reliability, identification of deficiencies and risk elements, and there were five major project alternatives to move forward. And the roundabout cost was, at that time, in 2015, was $100 million. So some of the repairs since 2016 on the transmission main. So every year, we have leaks on the transmission main that require either staff to go out or contractors to go out and put a band or clamp on the joints. And 20 joint repairs per year. Looked at just some of the other major repairs. So in 2016, you had a transmission main repair, just under $300,000. 2017, you had a leak at Goose Creek, 2.6 million. In town, in 2020 and in 2022, you've had leaks on transmission mains that require removal of track and replacement of mains. Recently, the, the repair at the intersection of Constance Road and Forest Hills, and they're currently working on a, on a valve, on a, on a valve leak at Willmore Road. So in the, in the past, since 2016, just over, just under $17 million has been spent in just repairs on the transmission main. Outside of the routine joint repairs, those repairs are actually a replacement of pipe. There was, there's a slide in here that's, that's missing, so I apologize for that. So there are some scheduled transmission main projects. So currently, we're working on a Prentice Street Transmission Main project, which replaces part of the low-transmission main system from the treatment plant to US 58. It involves significant coordination with the city of Suffolk, CSX, and HRSD. The overall cost for this project is $25 million. It's two phases. Phase one will be ready to advertise this summer. It'll be two years for construction. Phase two will be ready to advertise by the end of 2025, and it's two and a half years for construction. There are some near-future projects. There is a relocation of the segment of the 30-inch water transmission main in Suffolk is required because CSX is expanding their tracks, so both us and the city of Norfolk have to move our mains. City of Norfolk is taking the lead on that project. It's currently about 90% design stage. The cost to the city for the city share is about $9 million. And as, on our side, things that we're looking at, so we're looking at some HDPE lining of transmission main segments, lining of one of the 20-inch mains and the 30-inch low-pressure main, requires some phasing, but you're looking at a total project cost in today's dollars, $65 million. We're looking at a I-60, I-664 interconnect, $15 million project that increases reliability, connection between both low and high-pressure main systems. And then a Lake Cahoon raw water bypass project is $10 million to provide some reliability and redundancy for Lake Cahoon since both Mead and, so Cahoon supplies Mead, and those two are the primary, primary sources for drinking water. That bypass should, we not be able to get water from Mead, we'll be able to draw from Cahoon with that bypass. So this is for the water distribution system. This is just, I think this is from, yeah, so a connection of a, of a service line to a main out at the Churchland Library. So water distribution system consists of smaller pipes, fire hydrants, Frederick Booster Station, elevated storage type tanks, and other purposes that deliver potable water for drinking water and for fire flow, supports neighborhoods, businesses, and development activities. More than two-thirds of the pipes in the distribution systems are fully depreciated and considered to be beyond their useful life. Operations respond to about 116 main breaks and about 214 leaks per year. Distribution is considered to be in fair condition but needs significant work. Once again, considered to be in fair condition but needs significant work. Some of the programs that DPU takes to maintain system, system operations, unidirectional flushing program, valve, meter, and fire hydrant replacement program, and cumulative cost for those programs annually is just over $1 million. So there are regulatory impacts. Once again, these infrastructures heavily regulated. The lead and copper rule is one such regulation that impacts water distribution. The purpose of the federal lead and copper rule and the revisions is to protect the public health by reducing lead and copper levels in drinking water. Lead and copper can enter drinking water through disturbance or corrosion of lead and copper plumbing materials. Public water systems are required to monitor and take various actions to minimize lead and copper levels at consumers' taps. The city is required to identify and replace all lead service lines and galvanize service lines by the year 2037. This includes service lines on the private side of the meter up to the foundation. We provided our inventory to the Virginia Department of Health in October to be compliant with the regulations, dealt with the timeframe to get that, that plan to them. We mailed out notifications shortly thereafter. Those service line designations and more information about the overall rule and what the city's doing can be found, a link on the city's webpage in the community section, Lead Free Portsmouth. And we're currently working on next steps, which include a sampling pan, plan, development of a replacement plan, and then identification of, of funding source and mechanism to replace those lines on private property. Those estimated costs right now exceed $50 million. So moving on to everybody's favorite sewer, sewer pump station. So this is Race Street Station, Port Center Parkway, and City Park. The city of Portsmouth owns and operates 65 sanitary sewer pump stations. The system is aged and requires significant work to, to maintain compliance with regulatory mandates. As previously mentioned, the oldest pump stations were put into place, into service in 1925. The city has been aggressively working to rehabilitate its sewer pump stations over the past few years. We spent about $2 million in CIP funds and about $3.2 million in ARPA funds on rehabilitation during this timeframe. Sanitary sewer rehabilitation currently costs approximately, on average, $850,000, and that, that can include motors, controls, structural roofs, any of those things that, that would basically extend the life of, of the pump station. So in looking at this map, this is some of the funding for sewer pump stations, going down to the orange, the orange bubble. Those are the stations that were funded by ARPA. The green bubble, we have a federal pending earmark. We'll see with the recent action that, today, for Race Street and Douglas. And then this is, the, the ones in blue are part of the ask to the General Assembly for some funding to help us move some of those projects forward. So this is the condition of our pump station. So we have 11 stations that are considered to be good, 23 stations that are considered to be fair. So fair means operate, the station is operational but needs some upgrades. 21 stations that are poor means the station is still operational but has two or more components that are either in poor condition or that have failed. 10 stations that have, that are, that have failed, and those stations are on bypass pump. So there are currently 12 stations that are either under rehabilitation or getting ready to be put out for bid for rehabilitation. So those stations are the Norport Station, Deep Creek Boulevard, Chandler Harper, Blaine Street, Frederick Boulevard, Town Point Road, Churchland High School, Bishop's Green, Bunch Boulevard, Beachdale Road, Cedar Lane, and Victory Road. The other 43 remaining stations will require rehabilitation, and those costs are just under $37 million. So sanitary sewer collection system, this is picture of a failed sewer line, and the picture to the right is what happens to the street when you have a failed sewer line that goes unaddressed. So in 2018, there was a sewer, there was a study done, a sewer base and prioritization using a risk-based methodology that used an analysis of factors affecting the probability of failure and the consequences of failure, looking at the sewer collection system citywide. Probability of failure, looking at physical performance, those things, age, failure history, pipe material, quality- pipe material, quality of construction, design and construction standards, soil conditions, and operations and maintenance. And then for consequence of failure would be the impacts of that asset's failure, impacts of private property, pipe diameter, public interest, and roadway. So public interest is, should that infrastructure be next to a park or a library or that type of thing that may be taken out of service should there be a failure? So with that, 63, the city was divided into 63 sanitary sewer basins. They were evaluated. The higher the score, the greater the risk. A risk score of 10,000 or greater is considered a risk threshold above which replacement efforts would be considered critical. This threshold is set on a probability or ability failure score of 100 and a consequence failure score of 100, basically represents the equivalent of a 100-year-old pipe for both score components. The cost associated with the 16 basins that exceed that score of 10,000 was 1.5 billion. So, also subject to a consent order that impacts sewer. So Portsmouth and all of their Hampton Roads localities and HRSD are under consent order with EPA and DEQ to lower sanitary sewer overflows. The revised consent decree requires the development of a regional wet weather management plan by HRSD with impact with input from the localities. This revised updated plan relieves localities from capacity-related wet weather overflows. So heavy rain events, INI related to those things, HRSD is taking on responsibility. They have funding set aside to address deficiencies in the local, local collection systems for each one of jurisdictions that delivers sewage to their treatment facilities. We have two service areas that have been identified in the city. Now, I know if you remember over the summer, you may have seen notices that went out for smoke testing, and if you were driving along certain corridors, you would have seen smoke coming out of some of the manholes. Parkview area, some areas over, off of Frederick Boulevard, those are two of the areas that HRSD is looking at. Our locality is still required to implement of the approved operations and maintenance programs where we have to basically address those, those areas in the system that we know have problems, that there's things that have been identified due to age, condition, or frequent maintenance issues. And those consent order compliance efforts exceed a billion dollars, and they do include pump station upgrades. So, um, one of the more challenging part of our collection system is the vacuum-assisted sewer. This one of the older parts of the, of our system, so it consists of five sewer pump stations, 29 suction wells, and approximately 10 miles of sewer. It's more than 70-year-old and well beyond its useful life. Some portion of the system are nearing 100 years old. So, um, how it works is that a vacuum station generates a vacuum, and it's pressure below atmospheric pressure. There are networks of pipes and suction wells which collect the sewage, and then the pipes carry that sewage via vacuum station to the pump station. The valves open and close automatically to maintain that vacuum. So, um, picture yourself going to McDonald's and getting a milkshake. You get a straw, pull up, pull the paper off the straw, put your finger on the straw, and stick the straw in the milkshake, you pull it out. That's sorta, really roughly speaking, how the suction mains is, poke a hole in that straw, you don't get the, you don't get the milkshake out. Well, we have a lot of holes in our vacuum system that challenges operations guys to go out and maintain and try to keep, keep things going. The age of the system combined with exposure to harsh wastewater environment has caused excessive deterioration and frequent failures within the system. It's the most problematic part of our collection system. It impacts approximately one-third of the city of Portsmouth, including the downtown to midtown areas. Federal and state partners in this area include the 5th District Command, Shipyard, Marine Terminal, and Bonn's course hospital. An evaluation specifically for this system is being performed to identify spot projects to take a more targeted approach instead of folk, instead of projects on the, by sewer basin, which tend to be more expensive and take longer to develop. So, um, most water and sewer systems are approximately the same age. Therefore, the neighborhood approach is typically used when addressing water and sewer infrastructure. This approach also typically involves drainage and stormwater management. So these are, show some of the projects that have been completed and some that are currently under design. Prentice, Prentice Place, Phase One has been awarded. Phase Two and Three are designed and complete. Those are showing utility costs only for the Prentice project. The Edgewood Park costs and Ebeneighs costs are combined to include both stormwater as well in those cost estimates shown there, but those are full neighborhood revitalizations. So looking at recent utility spending, so going through the projects, see a list of projects there. There's some tank rehab, there's some sewer replacement projects. Currently, there's the Douglas Avenue project that was currently ongoing in Port Norfolk. And then throughout the year via contract, public utilities, their operation guys coordinate with contractors on various miscellaneous water sewer repairs throughout the system. And since 2019, you see they've spent just under $24 million in the system. So, based on all of the infrastructure categories that we looked at in the previous slides, the total aggregate cost for those improvements that are needed in both systems moving forward is just over, or what we've spent, I'm sorry, is just over $95 million, which means we've spent yearly spending since 2019, just over $19 million. And the slide I was speaking of by category, looking at the needs, and there is overlap, especially when you're looking at the sewer and then in the neighborhood. So there's some project overlap, so some of those costs do overlap, but generally, you're looking at the magnitude of cost for all of those things of just over $1.9 billion. By comparison, looking at CIP projections from a former utilities director, looking at the March 20, March 2020 CIP, looking at fiscal year '21 through '24, 1.5 billion. So the numbers are relatively close, so you count for some escalation, some things have changed, but you're looking at a yearly spending total to meet all of those current and future needs of just under $127 million. So, what is the recommendation? The recommendation is to continue to aggressively pursue external funding sources. We've been fairly successful in utilities and citywide in getting other people to help us pay for infrastructure. You saw the BRIC grant, you saw those dam safety grants that are helping fund the PERS. There are other, the first two phases that we've moved forward with lead and copper rule have been funded using funds through VDH and the federal government. There's additional funding available as we continue to move through the program, so continuing to identify those funding sources and to actively go after those funding sources to put together competitive applications so that we can obtain those funds is vitally important for us to be able to address the needs that we have. To update the 2017 rate study to include a financial model to determine the appropriate CIP funding levels, recognize that we're probably not going to get to $126 million a year in the CIP budget, but what is that right-size CIP number that we need to get to, to maintain the system, to be compliant and to continue to provide the service to the customers? To continue to address regulatory requirements, so dam rehab, consent order, lead service line replacement, those are the things that we have to do. So, it is paramount that we continue to do those things to meet our compliance objectives, and also where funding's available, once again, to go after those funds. Scale projects for affordability and ones that we can get the most impact until we can get the results of that rate study and the results of the vacuum-assisted sewer evaluation. We know where those areas are that need to be addressed, but they're large areas and it's a lot. But what is a smaller-scale, more targeted area that will give us the most bang for the buck, impact the most from a citizen's standpoint, and also provide some relief for the operations guys? Those are the ones that we should focus on while those studies are being addressed. And yearly, just, just looking at the system, your transmission main is critical, critical infrastructure. Pump stations are critical, so every year you should be looking at doing a transmission main project and three to five sanitary sewer pump stations. As far as working in the neighborhoods, a complete overhaul of an area or portion of the neighborhood every three to five years should be in a neighborhood doing a water sewer drainage project inside of one of the neighborhoods. So with that, I will take questions from the dice.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Are there any questions for my colleagues? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Ray, for the brief. So what you've outlined here is an elephant, and the only way I know to eat an elephant is a bite at a time. So we're looking at a million or a billion nine over the next 20 years. I think there was a brief done in front of city council a few years back by a private entity that they were proposing to take over some portion of the system, but I think maybe as you were pointing out, their prediction was, at least just on the sewer side, that we were looking at a billion dollars of improvements that needed to be made just on the sewer side. So I think to your point earlier, they're, they're just big numbers, and we're going to have to figure out how to deal with the big numbers. I'm wondering, so I think the numbers that you've presented here are for, at least the big numbers are for replacements. In the meantime, we have maintenance to do, and we're fixing leaks, and we're fixing main breaks, and you've spoken to those things. How about the, the basic periodic maintenance? So I don't think we got into our sewer transfer pump problem overnight. I think we got into our sewer transfer pump problem because there were basic maintenance things that, that either weren't getting done or weren't getting done frequently enough. Similarly, I think recently when we had our transmission line fail down in Suffolk, we discovered that, that maintenance on valves hadn't, hadn't been done as often as it needed to be done, and so the, the ability to isolate the problem ended up having to go further away from the problem than we had hoped because, because of maintenance. So there are these periodic maintenance things that we have some indications at least aren't getting done or aren't getting done as frequently as they need to be getting done. So I guess my question to you and the city manager, so what are we doing about that part? Are we taking a look ourselves to figure out what maintenance hasn't been done that needs to be and, and figuring out what the budget needs to be to address that? Or do we need to invite somebody in to do an assessment of the maintenance to help us figure out? And we've had these failures in sewer transfer stations and in our water main transmission line and some other places, and, and we need to figure out how to, how to and how much to step up our game on that periodic maintenance so that, so that we can nurse this thing along while we're assembling the big money we need to eventually replace?
So, I'm going to take a part of this, then I'm going to ask Mr. Stevens here to assist. So the sanitary sewer pump stations, they've, public utilities, along with the consultant, have recently developed a program where they have done an assessment of all 65 sanitary sewer pump stations. And it provides them with a dashboard that they can monitor daily to see what, how it's functioning, if there are issues or whatnot. So, we know what needs to happen at each one of the stations. The operations groups have been building out their forces to be able to go into these stations and take care of some of them things themselves. I think they actually have, correct me if I'm wrong, the Hartford Station, they actually did the full rehabilitation themselves, city staff, no contract work. As far as the valves and operation of the transmission main system, that's going to be problematic, problematic until we get into the transmission main system, breaking it up into smaller chunks and lining the system. So you, between Suffolk, the Treatment Plant, and the Booster Station, you have about 13 valve groups. That's a long stretch of, of main. I think we've mentioned 18 miles with 13 valve groups. So, going to isolate a valve, you're talking about a mile between, between pipe sections. So as you're lining sections, the idea is to drop valves in so you can have a better chance to isolate should something occur. And then public utilities has plans to go in and start to work to exercise some of these, but with that, I'm going to let Mr. Stevens speak a little bit more from the operations side.
So, so before Mr. Stevens speaks, though, to your point, so we are digging out of a hole on sewer transfer stations. My, my point really is, we got into a hole because things weren't being taken care of along the way. We weren't discovering things that needed to be repaired until the point of failure, and then things failed, and, and then we had supply chain issues and had trouble getting parts, and, and I appreciate that we're all working hard to dig ourselves out of the hole that we got into. My, I guess my concern on the, on the periodic maintenance question is, once we get everything working again the way it needs to be working again, what did we learn that we're going to do differently to make sure that we don't go right back into that same maintenance hole and find ourselves in five or 10 years needing to dig ourselves back out again?
Um, thank you, thank you, Councilman Hugel. And Mr. Carter's asked for the floor to provide an explanation, so sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Great question, Councilman Hugel, because as we look at this, nothing that we're talking about today is a result of anything that happened yesterday.
Right.
This is decades in, in the making.
Yep.
We have learned from that mistake, and as we're going around now, you know, scrambling to get things done and get things fixed, we're putting procedures in place now so that it doesn't happen again. We, we, we will do the maintenance that's required as we're upgrading and as we're, as we're doing things around our city. We do have a plan now that puts maintenance back on the schedule, and we're making sure that those things get done as scheduled, instead of just kind of kicking it down and, and we'll do it at some other time, or we don't have time, or we have this other thing. We're prioritizing the actual maintenance of the system so that as we get things done, we don't have to go back and visit them the same way we've had to in the past. But yes, that is an absolutely great question, and that is more in line with what it needs to be as our, as we look to our future. Unfortunately, you know, we can't change what happened in the past.
Sure.
But we have to put some things in place to ensure that we don't repeat that same thing, and we're doing that.
Okay. And, and we think we know what needs to be done, or do we need to ask somebody to come in to help us figure out what needs to be done maintenance-wise? You know, I'm talking about preventive maintenance now.
We know what needs to be done.
Okay.
All right. We do need some help in getting it all done, because we, we can't throw enough people and enough money at it to get us caught up.
Yeah, that's the digging out of the hole part that we were just talking about, sure. So we got whole dig out of, and that's part of the elephant that we're...
Absolutely. We know what should be done.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Regarding the, let's see, the CWIFP, which stands for Core Water Infrastructure Financing Program, so $101 million, is that approved? And I guess it's a loan.
It is a loan, correct.
And is that loan approved?
So, how the process works is you're invited to file a pre-application. The fact, when, and they review the pre-application, you provide them a bunch of information about the project, your financial condition and so forth. It's a lengthy pre-application process. You provide that information to the core, they review it, and if they move you on to the application, it's a pretty good chance that you're going to get the loan, because there are folks that don't move on beyond the pre-application. So it's almost, preapplication is a screening for a viable project, so once you... So once you pass that part, then you have basically a year to put in an application to work out whatever the details are, to see if you're approved for the funding. We are set to get our complete application in sometime during the summer. And so we'll be going back and forth with our core contact on basically the same thing we've been doing with the brick grant, answering questions until they can get comfortable enough to provide us with agreement, to provide us with whatever funding they're going to provide us with.
Okay. And then does the loan repayment hit our debt service line? Where does the money come from to repay $101 million, I guess is the question?
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. It will hit our debt service line, but this is an enterprise fund that we're talking about. This is not the general fund line.
Sure.
So there's a different mechanism that has to be done to make sure that that particular fund has the capacity to acquire that debt and pay it back. So a little bit different, but yes, it will hit our debt line.
Okay. And then on that same line, it says that the cost to do those dam repairs is $155 million. So if we've asked the core for $101 million, there's another $54 million of money that's got to come from somewhere. Is the thinking that we're going to pay that bill ourselves? Or are we asking the state? Or what's the plan to cover down on the other 50 million?
Let's...
All of the above.
Okay.
Yes. Remember, one of the things you talked about was pursuing funding opportunities, and we have to aggressively do that in order to make any of these plans work.
And, sir, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, just remember the brick grant is part of that dam funding. So it's $155 minus 24, whatever that number is, minus the 101. So it's not the full 150, not the 55, so it's 125 months. It's like another 24 million or 30 million or so.
Okay. Thank you.
And before we go on to, I know Mr. Moody has a question. You did say that Mr. Stevens had some additional information you wanted him to provide. Are you still wanting him to provide that information?
Yeah, to speak basically to the operations question that the councilman answered.
Okay, very good. Sir, did you want to speak to that operations question, then, Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Sir, you'll have the floor.
The maintenance of your city that we're in right now. There is no maintenance plan for, there can't be, there's not a maintenance plan for the city infrastructure after 100 years. We have to pursue CIP. That's the only way we can start. We're running, we're running around the clock trying to fix this thing. Last two weeks, we had 22 main breaks. That's unheard of. And these guys have been working out there day and night in the freezing cold. So yes, the maintenance plan is there, and we know exactly what we need, but we're going to need the help from you.
So, Mr. Mayor, any follow-ups?
Go ahead, sir. You have the floor.
Yeah, so that's exactly the reason I'm asking the question. I mean, we're all in the budget season.
Right.
We got a great big...
Yes, sir.
...bill, figuring out, okay, this is what we've been doing. And what we've been doing is helping to dig out of a hole in some areas, but there's some other pieces of this problem that I don't think we're even touching yet.
Yes.
And so we're going to need your help to help us figure out how to help you track it. So that means you've got to have a plan. We need to know how much the plan costs so that we can put it back in. And I think we all get it, but that's kind of where we are.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Okay, thanks.
Thank you both. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wright, thank you for the briefing. Could you expound more on this consent order from DEQ and EPA? I know you said the compliance efforts exceed a billion. And are there penalties associated with not meeting that? And what is the timetable for meeting that?
We have until just out past 2050, looking at the last information that I've seen in some of the utility records. Really, the original consent order, HRSD had their consent order. So it was a regional consent order. Norfolk, I think, received their consent order first, and then the region got a consent order with individual entities named Chesapeake, Suffolk, HRSD, so forth and so on. Right around 2014, it was amended and revised for HRSD to pick up those things related to the wet weather program. So heavy rainfall events, I N I, because everybody's sending, basically, their sewage to the treatment plant. So in those conditions, those surcharge conditions, you're sending more sewer to the treatment plants, and they're having issues at the plant. So the concept is if HRSD, which has access to more funds than most localities, can identify areas in the city to target and make improvements, the impact on Portsmouth or Suffolk or whoever to the treatment plant is less. And so that's why they've identified those two areas in the city to focus their efforts on and fund projects to fix in those two areas. Similar efforts are going on to other localities that send basically their sewage to HRSD as well. Doesn't relieve us from overflows, failures in our systems, and other things that we need to take care of. That's the whole management and operations plan. That's the part, condition and age, things that you have in your sewer. So go back to the slide before that, looking at the sewer basin study. We're old, we're depreciated, and we're experiencing issues. Outside of just those two areas, we have other issues that we need to look at. Also includes pump stations. So if your pump station's not working, and you have your system on bypass, you're pumping it whole, and you're doing other things, the system's not working right. You're, the city's responsible for those things, not HRSD. And so those are the things that we're looking at, those end system improvements, pump station improvements, those things to basically put the system back to being whole.
Right. You know, given the sewage issue and the water issue, what keeps you up at night on what needs to, what's the most critical in each of those areas?
Nothing really keeps me up at night, but I know what you're saying. The most critical piece from my standpoint is the low-pressure transmission main system with the water. Because the dams are an issue because the regulation changed. I don't think the dams are going to fail tomorrow or anything like that. The transmission mains, you never know. And I'm not sure if there was a picture in the presentation with just water shooting up into the, into the screen. So the picture to the far right, probably have a number of those out along the railroad corridor right now that we don't know because they're inaccessible at the moment. They're putting a new contract in place to do clearing along there. You're probably going to find more of those instances like that. You go under creeks, you're in railroad right-of-way, the Humane Society repairs. We had to schedule, had to have the mains shut off for a period of time so as not to compromise the track. When you go in to do the repair for the, with CSX, you have to coordinate with CSX, get a permit, have CSX inspectors on site. You have to provide them with a shoring plan, potentially leave shoring in place to not compromise the track, and take the track out to do the repair, then put it back. If the track goes because of a leak, not only are you responsible for repairing the track, you're responsible for loss of commerce as well. So yes, 80% of the low-pressure main is in CSX right-of-way. Another portion of that is in another railroad right-of-way. So that is the most critical portion of the water system, in my opinion.
With the consent order, with the sewage collection system and the cost of replacing some of the infrastructure on the water side and deferred maintenance, do you anticipate, and I know we've been increasing water rates to offset some of that cost, how about on the sewage side with Hampton Roads? Is there been discussion about increasing those rates to help offset some of the cost of the consent order?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I haven't been part of those discussions at the regional level. There have been those discussions, but I'd have to get back to you with the answer for that specifically. But looking at that one recommendation, looking at the rate study, if I didn't, financial model, that's looking forward and projecting what can you reasonably afford to pay for, what things that you need to do moving forward in a coordinated approach with operations to get your system back on track.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wright, for the presentation. It was quite a bit of information to take into one night. So I'm trying to do my best right now to, I guess, how Councilman Hugel put it, take small bites of this big elephant at a time. I'm going to just start, I guess, with what I know was on some of the forefront of some of the citizens' mind in regards to the notices that were provided, I guess, due to the lead, what was it called, the lead regulation?
Lead and copper rule, lead service line replacement.
Okay. So the, I see that you have a website for the citizens where they can look up information to see if they are impacted by lead pipes. Is that just going in, service lines going into their home, or the ones that are maintained by the city? Because I know that letter specified the city will, the city will replace lead pipes, I guess, on a plan.
So...
But can you give me some information about that?
Yeah, so it's going to be both. So the lead and copper rule requires replacement of lead service lines up to the foundation. The primary focus being on children's facilities, like schools, daycares, things of that nature. Then moving on, hospitals, assistance leave facility, things like that, and then residences. Letters went out to the residents, just basically so that we, we did our inventory. We provide our inventory to the Department of Health. Second part of that is to basically provide those notices to citizens, whether you were, did not have lead or galvanized, whether you had lead, whether you had galvanized, or whether you were unknown. There are four letters that went out, those four categories. So there's, you're good, you have lead, you have galvanized. They treat lead and galvanized the same, or you're unknown. Our next piece that we have to do as a city is do a sampling plan where we go out in some of those areas. So, and I forget off the top of my head that they stopped using basically lead in service lines. But all of those homes prior to that point are potentials, if we don't know, to go in and develop a group of, a list of like categories. Say houses constructed between this time period and this part of the city. You sample a certain amount of them, you come up, you come up with a certain amount of hits. You got a pretty idea that most of the ones in there probably do have. So we're sampling on the city side of the meter, sampling on the customer side of the meter. Those notifications will have to go out as well when we get to that point where we're actually out in the field doing the sampling. Once we do that, we put together a replacement plan. We have to replace everything on the public side. So from the main to the meter, the city's going to be responsible for. We can't stop there. So we, there's a replacement requirement by the rule from the back of the meter to the foundation, which is the customer side. We can't go on private property. That's why we're working to find a funding mechanism and also a mechanism to help your citizen be able to do that replacement. So say you get, we come out and do a sampling plan, and then you're one of the individuals that we have to come out and do a lead service line replacement. We'll take care of what's on our side. The goal of what we're looking at is to have a list of, basically, plumbers that have been vetted that can go in and do this work. We would have it set up through the program to have those inspected, inspected, certified, and approved. And then through the program that we're looking at, those funds would come through a grant reimbursement. So that you, as a homeowner, you have to sign up. You're like, hey, yeah, I want to sign up for this program. You sign up, and we go through, you work with, you select from a suite of these plumbers. Hopefully, you like one of them, and they do that work on your side and end up replacing the line. That's how envision it in general it will work.
Okay, so I guess my question, because, and thank you for explaining kind of your next steps that I see that you have outlined here on, I don't have any page numbers on this slide. So I'm trying to refer, I'm on this slide, regulatory impacts on water distribution, in case anybody wants to know what I'm looking, referring to. But you mentioned that it will exceed $50 million. A 2037 completion date is what we have to, when we say completion, is that our part? Or we also are looking for all our residents that are impacted by lead pipes, our schools, our medical facilities? Is that a completion on everyone?
Right now, that is by, that is by regulation. So that is the requirement for the city of Portsmouth to address lead service lines in the city of Portsmouth. So if you want to go out, if you get a notification, you want to go out and do it on your own, great. If you want to wait till we get to you with the program, that's your choice. We can't not allow you to do something on your own property, private property. If you want to go out and do testing yourself, you're more than welcome to do that. But as part of the program, how the regulations are written currently, 2037 is our deadline to basically get through all the program and all the replacements.
Do we have a plan, then, I'm thinking about the children in our city that are potentially impacted, medical facilities impacted, elderly impacted? Do we have a plan to prioritize, you know, high-risk, high, just high-risk individuals or communities, neighborhoods in Portsmouth that we might need to address earlier rather than later? Is that plan going to give us a timeline there?
We don't have the replacement plan in place, but the regulation is written such that...
Or testing plan?
Well, the testing plan will, the testing plan is intended to basically gather information on the unknown so that you can put together a replacement plan and some costs to go along with it so you can come up with documents that you can basically put out on the street and get contractors to bid on it and come back. The prioritization is already in the regulations. Once again, it's schools and daycares, hospitals, those things where those populations are most impacted, and then you go, then everything else sort of falls under that.
Okay. And thank you. And thank you for this. This will be then for the city manager. On that website, I tried to just look at it while I was up here, and it has the parcel map for residents to be able to, I guess, look to see if they're impacted. But using it on my phone, I can't put in the address. Is it just a zoom in, click on a dot? Can we make, I guess, as this, as we get further along in our planning, can we make or provide more information on this site? Because I know that when you talk about lead with the issues that happened in Flint, Michigan, citizens will be concerned more and more. So the more information we can provide as we get more information towards the replacement testing and planning, can we add that so that residents have a way to get that information easily?
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
In a word, absolutely. The person who's listening to you right now, Mr. Peter, I'm sure he's taking this in and figuring out right now how we can provide the information that you're talking about. So absolutely, ma'am.
All right, thank you. And I have other questions, but I'm going to yield right now so that other council members can go. Thank you.
Just because you mentioned it, Flint, Michigan was a source water, water treatment issue, not a lead issue.
Now, wait, say that again.
Flint, Michigan was a source water, water treatment issue, not a lead, not a lead pipe issue.
Yeah, understood, understood, but the public, public perception is what I'm...
Exactly, and that's also why I said that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, sir. Our next up is Councilman Dodson. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir, for the floor. As an ex-engineer, I love engineering presentations. You put a lot of information in here, and you've shown us one thing is that you guys are one of the departments that's heavily seeking funding outside to help us out as a city. To follow up with what Admiral Hugel was talking about, when we go into budget, we're still looking at this as a crisis management plan. So in engineering, we have failures which we accept, and we go, we can go back and fix that. But above that, we have something that's called a crisis, a catastrophic failure. But above that, we have something that's called a crisis, a catastrophic failure. And I'm looking at a catastrophic failure modality of thinking here that we're still kind of carrying on a little bit. And I side with Mr. Hugo when I say we really need to see that there, that maintenance program underneath the crisis funding that we need. This is truly a crisis that I spoke to the council about two or three years ago myself, when you guys were, were presenting this, and it hasn't gotten any better from, over the last couple of years. I'd really like to back up what Mr. Hugo was saying, and can we see this maintenance program underlaid over top of the crisis management program that we have? It would make our budget program analysis so much easier than just seeing this presentation. And thank you so much for the funding work that you're doing. Amazing help, amazing, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And one of the things I would caution all of us in our speaking, it's important that we say, if we say things haven't gotten better, perhaps, as was described to us, there are a lot of issues that have to be worked on, and we don't have all of the answers, but listening to our city engineer, we, we are working as fast as we can to address the concerns and the issues. So, it's important that we continue to be supportive in how we address this very important matter. Of course, it is a very important matter because it deals with our drinking water, but as we all have learned, this is not something that has just arrived. And because it hasn't just arrived, I think we all have to work collaboratively together to address it one step at a time, provide the necessary information and leadership and direction so that we can begin to improve upon and make our water system, delivery system, the safest that it can be. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Almost, just before you go, 'cause I'm gonna take this information and, you know, make sure I can understand it as we go into budget season. But on the sanitary sewer collection system analysis, you mentioned that you had a study done, right, and that 16, I think, yeah, 16 sewer bases received a risk score of 10,000 or higher, and that the cost for those 16 was $1.5 billion. And just for clarification, is that the impact cost that they associated with the risk, or is that the cost to repair, fix those 16 basins?
It's replacement cost.
Replacement, okay. So, it's not the impact from the risk that they identified, okay?
And there's overlap between consent order and then this, they, they, those two, those two studies overlap with the cost, so it's not 1 billion and then another 1.5 billion, that's, that's shared cost. So, just took the higher of the two and put it in there, that's why though you see the 1.5 billion when we're talking about sewer.
And in that study, did they provide, like, an overall kind of risk matrix to show all 63, what's red, yellow, green, or something like that, that we can maybe see to take back? Because I know that the 16 are high-risk, there's probably screaming red, but are there some yellow that we should be planning for in the future as well? And that's my risk background speaking there, so, just interested in planning for that purpose.
Yes, I forget the colors, but yeah, it's red, green, and there are a couple of other colors in the matrix, yes.
So, is that something we can maybe have city manager later? Just, just to kind of digest as we go into our, sorry, I'm drawing a blank, our, what's the thing on March 7?
Retreat.
Retreat, thank you. As we go into our retreat, just to review for planning purposes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, just one, one follow-up, and this is to the city manager. So, so, the engineer rattled off a list of sewer transfer stations that we're working on or are next up to be worked on. I didn't write them all down. Could we get, could we get that list from you, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, thank you for the comprehensive update, and continue to, to do the good work that you do. It is appreciated, thank you. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, I do appreciate that work that you've put into this. And this is, not, the sky's falling. I, I don't wanna give anybody the impression that that's what we're trying to present to you. What we're trying to present to you is a comprehensive look at where we are, and then some of the things that we're, that has been done, some of the things that we're actively doing to try and mitigate some of the things that, that we have neglected in our past. So, this is a work in progress, but I needed to give you an idea of, of the magnitude of the problem that we're facing. Again, it's not, not, the sky's falling, but hey, this is something that requires some immediate attention, and I needed you to understand the, the magnitude of that. Next is going to, Mr. Garcia? All right, Mr. Garcia is gonna come up and do a presentation about some of our facilities. We're a little bit pressed on time here, so we won't be as comprehensive as what you just got, but do want to provide some information to you about the, I guess, the amount and the magnitude of, of our facilities. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir. Okay, good night, Mr. Carter, members of the council.
Mr. Garcia, sir, if you could bring the microphone closer to your mouth so that we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's much better, sir.
All right, like I was saying, good night, Mr. Carter, members of the council. First and foremost, I want to say, Mr. Robinson sends his apologies for not being able to be here tonight due to unforeseen illness. As a result, I'll be giving the presentation on the status of the city facilities and buildings in the city of Portsmouth, all right? I would like the council to take into account that the numbers in regards to inventory that is gonna be provided in this presentation was sourced from multiple city departments, so the numbers could be adjusted up or down within a margin of error between 1% or 2% based on that. Any questions in regards to accuracy of inventory of buildings? Could be referred to Mr. Darry Stevens, who is the property manager of that department, all right? So, we can start with the presentation. Within the city of Portsmouth, there are 123 buildings and facilities maintained by the Department of Properties Management. We have divided those two, all those buildings into two categories, namely, service buildings and operational buildings. Service buildings are the ones that the public has access to, to conduct official city business or they pay to use, which would be your city halls and your rec centers, all right? Your operational buildings, which is the second category, these are buildings that the public do not have access to formally, and they mainly used by the city employees as a base for their day-to-day operations. So, an example of that would be the property management building and the fleet management building on Frederick Boulevard. Staffing, at current, the Department of Properties Management has 33 total employees. Of the tradespeople, the numbers are listed there, we have three plumbers, one HVAC technician, two electricians, two carpenters, two painters, one laborer, and one building maintenance Full staffing should be 37 individuals. So, if you, if you take that into account and you split them, the buildings evenly between the tradespeople, you see that. For instance, the carpenters, you have approximately over 60 buildings being serviced by one carpenter, okay? The next category is vacant buildings. We have seven within the city of Portsmouth. On the service side, we have two in the Parks and Rec Department and one in the Police Department. On the operational sides, you have four that belong to the Police Department. Next section. Within the city of Portsmouth, you have eight buildings that have been earmarked for demolition. Most of them are tied to the Civic Center project building. Any questions on that could be deferred to the engineering department, they would have more information in regards to that. The city of Portsmouth leased four buildings. Property management does not maintain those buildings, those are maintained by the leasing, and they are listed on the, in the presentation. The recent repairs, upgrades to service buildings, we have four rec centers, two libraries, four fire stations, one police building, and one museum. We also have the recently acquired Hampton Roads Regional Jail. And any questions about that particular building, questions could be deferred to the engineering department. Social services, they have some water leaks that are currently being repaired. For behavioral health, you could refer, any questions, you could refer to Mr. Stevens, who's with me right here. Recent repairs, upgrades to the operational buildings, we have the property management building, the work release building, the radio shop, the golf club, and the city cemetery. And those are five in total. In summarizing the state of the city buildings and facilities, what I would say is based on the professional analysis of the property manager and the staff that he works with, over 60% of the buildings currently being serviced by property management are in need of between $50,000 to $100,000, just to start, in order to be code compliant. Contract work, there exists no uniform system within the city to officially inspect different phases of work during construction by vendors. That requires permits. Staffing shortages, current staffing for property management is at 33, full staffing should be 37. We recommend having 50 employees in order to properly service these buildings, the way they should be. Budget, the property management's budget has not kept pace with the added city inventory. An example of that would be the recently acquired Hampton Roads Regional Jail. The budget has not taken into, into account the cost of materials, the rise in prices, and the rise in prices of contracted work for services that contractors, that we need to contract out. Our recommendations, our one-year plan, Mr. Robinson and I plan to complete an in-house assessment of all city buildings serviced by property management for structural integrity repairs and ongoing issues. The three-year plan would be to upgrade and restructure. Five-year plan would be to recommend to the city manager buildings for demo and replacement. The 10-year plan would be to have every building up to code according to state and federal And that concludes the presentation for facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia and Mr. Stevens. Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, thanks for the brief, this is insightful. Two questions. So, I, I understand you're gonna do an assessment of all the buildings to understand what needs to be done. Will that assessment also take a look at, do we still need this building?
Yes, sir.
Can we consolidate people in the one building into another building and just get rid of buildings?
Correct.
Okay, good. That's enough, thanks.
Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Wrong button. I recently had a tour of the jail. Who's that fall under?
That falls under general services.
General services. Can I speak to somebody after the meeting about that tour? I don't know that I want to air it in public.
I think that that would be appropriate, to speak to someone after the...
You can speak to me.
You can speak to the manager, that's exactly right. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the briefing. On the staffing issue, are we having to outsource a lot of the needed repairs due to the staffing shortage?
So, property management has, the work that we perform would be minor to medium repairs. Major repairs are contracted out. So, for what we take care of, yes, the staffing is inadequate, to directly answer your question. But yes, that has an impact on maintaining the buildings and the acceleration of wear and tear.
And the, the shortage, is it due to not being able to get qualified people, or is it due to a, a budget situation?
Well, it's mainly due to a budget. I don't know, Mr. Stevens can elaborate on that.
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens, if you would please come to the microphone, sir, that would be helpful.
Yes, I, I would say, just budget issues. In the 90s, 2000s, we had 50, 52 employees under, under our umbrella. Through the years, as they left, there just wasn't never picked back up, and it was just taken off of the system to what, to point to where we are now. For us, I would use our HVAC. We have one HVAC tech that has to service 123 facilities that we have. That is a huge task for him. We do have contractors out, but in the early 2000s, we had Fortax. So, which, you know, that took the place of us trying to get a contractor to come out, trying to absorb their cost, their overhead, versus us having someone that in-house to where we cutting the cost, we get the materials our own, and we have staff go out there and do it, so. And that's pretty much with all the trades that we have right now. Really need to increase our staff so we can handle the day-to-day operations. There are gonna be some things that we're gonna have to contract out, but it, it, it would help if our staff was increased so we can, we can handle the load that has been put in front of us.
Thank you. I guess my next question's to the manager, are, are those positions funded and unfilled, or they're just no longer in the budget?
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
The 37 are funded. The 50 that they're asking for is not even on the books. Now, one of the things that I would suggest, though, is as we go through this exercise, not only do we need the right size of staff, we need the right size of buildings. I think 120, at least in my mind, 123 buildings is bloated, you know what I mean? So, so, yeah, we need to do something for the staff, but we need to, to lower the load that they have to, to look at. So, collectively, those two things, I think we can work something out to make it a lot better on everybody.
And does that staffing, that does not include the school staffing?
Oh, no, sir. This is just our staffing, this is not school system staffing.
Well, I guess my question is, is there any economies of scale that could be realized by combining the maintenance? Obviously, we're, we're responsible for the buildings through the CIP, so how about the day-to-day maintenance?
Day-to-day maintenance is on the public school system. I have to, I don't even know what their staffing is for that, so I would have to talk to Dr. Bracy to see if that...
Might be worthy to look into that. The skills might already be there, and I have no idea what they have either, but I think we should know, and if there's a potential to combine the workforces, might be something to look at.
Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Garcia, for the presentation. I'm looking at the page, that is, recent repairs and upgrades, and the note about Port Norfolk's rec center and the elevator, I know elevators have been problematic for the city at the museums. Can you describe why elevators have been such a struggle for us of late?
Yes. The problem that we've been having within the city is just the age of the elevators and trying to get the parts to keep the elevators functioning. A lot of the parts are no longer available, they would have to be either remanufactured or they would take a new system and try to put it into where the old system's at. A lot of the equipment that we have, we use City Hall, for example, we have to get that out of California. It's nowhere local that we can get it. And then, when we do research it, it has to be manufactured. And that, that's been one of, one of the biggest issues. If we talk about Port Norfolk, that's another elevator that's antiquated. They don't make it parts for that anymore, so it would have to be remodeled similar to what we doing here at City Hall. So, that's, that's, that's where the task is at. And having also a reliable elevator company that is, is willing to help us to keep our elevators functioning, keep the inspections going, and, and be professional in a timely manner in getting things done for our elevator systems.
Yes, thank you. I, I just wanted to draw some attention to that, along with the HVAC systems at the libraries. I know all of these are priorities, and we want to treat them all as appropriate. HVAC is a problem in summer when places like our museums and libraries are a place where children go, and it, it's hot in Virginia in the summertime, and most children are spending time indoors. So again, I just wanted to draw attention to that. I know that the library camp at the main library where it's in the basement and there's no HVAC is a miserable place for children to be. And we want to be mindful of the messaging that we're giving our families and our children and our visitors to museums, the Children's Museum, City Hall, the courthouse. So just wanted to point those out, and thank you for your attention to those.
One thing I will say too, with the main library and the children's sections in the basement, our team did go there and replaced that whole system in there. So it was very appreciative of us to step in and do it, not have a contractor come in and do it, so. But we have a long way to go on the HVAC systems because, because of the age of the systems, it's, it's going to take some time to get the repairs done.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of elevators, I'm told a lot of the elevators in the parking garages are, are not working. Is that a parts issue as well?
Yes, yes. Because of the age of, of the facilities, the, the parts are not readily available. And unfortunately, you get to a point to where they put in Band-Aids on something that really needs to be addressed on being replaced versus being repaired. I know repair is going to get the job done temporarily, but we need to look at a long-term goal on having the elevators remodeled.
Are all of them inoperable in the parking garages?
No, no, not, not all. I'll have to get with our elevator company and give you a, a more, a more overview on where we at far as elevators in our garages.
How often are they inspected?
The elevator's supposed to be inspected yearly.
By whom?
Priority elevated elevators is who we have currently now. They're the ones that doing the elevator inspections, and that is also has been done through a third-party inspector as well.
And that, that is to make sure they're in compliance?
In compliance, yes.
With state or, or federal regs?
It's, it's with state.
With state?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Gentlemen, thank you both for the presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for your attention and for the engagement in both of these presentations. I thought they were important that we provide that information to you. That concludes what we have planned for this evening. However, tonight's council meeting includes several important items for discussion in the city manager's report. To start, the council will be asked to adopt an ordinance to accept $1,500 in funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services. This money will go toward a family partnership meeting incentive program, which is designed to support family engagement, our efforts in our community. We'll also be considering an ordinance to accept 1,000, I'm sorry, $11,600 in program income from the Home Investment Partnership Program. This is in money that has been repaid based on down payment and assistance to, to the members of that program. It actually is showing that the program functions the way it's supposed to function. It loans out money, and then it, it recoups that money to be able to loan out again. Another item on the agenda is the, the code realignment, realignment. That is just a, a requirement to change some language in our code to reflect what the state has changed. Additionally, we'll be asking you to adopt a resolution to support Division Zero policy. This is a policy, this is really an administrative thing that kind of puts us in position to be able to seek more funding in the Safe Streets for All, a granting process. And finally, the council will be asked to consider a resolution to approve the issuance of revenue bonds for Bond Secures Mercy Health Incorporated. One thing about this particular resolution is that Bond Secure is using Henrico County as the issuing agent for those bonds, so there may be work done in Portsmouth. So the, the rule is that if there is a industrial authority in the facility, in the area where the work may be done, there's requirement to have a resolution from the governing body to say, hey, we, we're aware of this, and we're okay with it happening. There's no requirement, no financial obligation from us for this. This is just an administrative thing that allows them to move forward with their bonding process. That concludes my comments for the evening and everything that I have for the work session, sir.
Thank you, Manager Carter. Now we've come to city council liaison reports. Do we have any city council liaison reports? Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of liaison reports to offer tonight. First is the, at the most recent mayor's military affairs committee meeting, we invited a representative from Elizabeth River Crossings to address toll relief, which was well-received by the commands that attend the military affairs committee meetings. Quite a few junior sailors that either are stationed here in Portsmouth, at the shipyard, at the hospital, or at the Coast Guard Base, in transit through the tunnel to get to work, or young folks that, that actually live here, and, and in either or both cases can qualify for the, the new toll relief of $50,000 or less of, of annual salary that offers them fourteen free trips through the tunnel every week. There were, it was a good exchange, a lot of questions specifically about how military people need to apply to qualify, and, and so a good exchange, and a lot of good information supplied to our military commands here. Secondly, at this morning's Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission was announced to the PPIC that, that we recently received from the state a port host community grant to the tune of $800,000. That's going to, to allow a transload facility to be constructed along Virginia Avenue and basically between Virginia Avenue and, and the Martin Luther Kinks Expressway. That transload facility is one of two that are planned to support the Port of Virginia here in Portsmouth. Those facilities basically allow trains to bring primarily agricultural products via train into the, the port area, and then have the grain loaded into containers and, and moved by truck over into the port facility to be loaded for export. So that's a new capability that, that will increase the scope of what the Port of Virginia here at VIG is capable of doing. And then finally, the next Crime and Gun Violence Reduction Task Force meeting is next Monday evening at 6:00 PM, and the public is invited to join the task force to see what's going on in the areas of crime and gun violence reduction. That's it, sir, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Bryant and I attended our first Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority meeting, just to introduce ourselves, and it was a great meeting. One thing I want to just bring to the public is that starting today, they did have a waitlist that opened for a few of our locations, Dale's Home, Seaboard Square, Hope Village, King Square, Hamilton Place, and I might be forgetting another one, but residents, the waitlist closes tomorrow at 4:00 PM. You can go to P R H A dot org to apply, to get on those waitlists for those, for housing, if you, and see if you qualify. So I just wanted to bring that to the public's attention, and we had a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And recently, I attended the mayor's conference in Washington, DC, had an opportunity to meet up with some very important presentations. One in particular was on housing in areas such as ours and throughout the country. As you all know, housing is a very important component of providing a quality of life in safe communities, and we don't have enough of it. So we brought back some good information to share with my colleagues, and so we will be moving forward with a strategy and a game plan to certainly increase our housing stock and provide quality housing for our citizens in the citizens, in the city of Portsmouth. So just wanted to share that. And that concludes our presentations for the evening, and that concludes our meeting. Our meeting is adjourned, and I will see everyone at 7:00 o'clock at our regularly scheduled meeting. This meeting is adjourned.